Okay, we'll have a call to order. It's 7:00 PM, Tuesday, November the 17th, 2015, and the zoning board of adjustments is now in session. I think our first activity tonight will be an update for staff regarding duties and responsibilities of the zoning board of adjustments. And I'll ask Arnold Polanco, the city attorney, to offer that, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer. As the board may recall from your last scheduled meeting, at the outset, we had a very brief discussion regarding the various options that were available to the board in terms of what types of actions it might consider in response to an application that's been filed with the city. And we went through those very briefly. There was a very limited discussion. After the meeting was concluded and we visited as a staff, we thought it would be beneficial for the board if we would come back at tonight's meeting and present to you a very brief, and I emphasize "brief," discussion about what exactly the ordinance and state law provides for the zoning board of adjustment in terms of powers and what the options are that are available to you under the code of ordinances as these cases come before you. So that's the purpose of tonight's presentation. So if we could go on, Aubrey, to the next slide.
Oh.
Arnold, I'm sorry. Did you say you have a packet available?
I'm sorry?
Did you say you had a packet available?
We can provide a hard copy of this at the conclusion of the meeting.
Oh, thank you.
We'd be happy to circulate it.
Okay, at the conclusion, thanks.
Sure, we'd be happy to circulate that to you.
Thank you.
All right. In terms of the actual authority that is conferred upon the board, it has derived from two sources, one being state law, and that would be Section 211 dot 009 of the local government code, and then secondly would be the zoning ordinance of the city of Friendswood itself, specifically Appendix C, Section 11 of the Code of Ordinances. In terms of the two, you would normally think that state law would actually be the more important of the two, but that's not actually the case. And the reason I say that is because when you look at the statute, it says that the board may exercise one or more of the powers that are given to you and as are stated in the Code of Ordinances. Your actual authority comes from, is derived not only from the state law, but from the ordinance which says that the board shall exercise the following duties. So on one hand, the state law says you have the option to exercise these various powers. It's the city council, when they adopted the actual zoning ordinance, that dictates what those powers are and what those powers shall, and how those powers shall be exercised. In terms of the ordinance, what it does provide is that you have three basic options available to you as a board. One, and that is to conduct an administrative review. Two, to grant, to consider and grant variances, or to deny a variance, or to grant a variance with options or conditions. And then thirdly, to consider what are called special exceptions. And we'll go through these in some detail as we go forward. Let's talk about the administrative review. And this comes directly from the Code of Ordinances. The basis for your considering an administrative review as stated in the ordinance is that someone comes forward and alleges that there's been some kind of error committed in an order requirement decision or determination made by an administrative official in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance. And there are various types of examples I could provide for you, and I thought, maybe I'll just give you a very simple one. In the zoning ordinance, specifically the section dealing with the community overlay district, talks about utilities to a property within that particular overlay. And what it says, very shortly, it says, "All permanent utilities serving the property shall be located underground at the owner's expense." The ordinance doesn't actually define what permanent utilities are. We normally connote a permanent utility as something in the nature of electricity, water, sewer, gas. Some people might consider telephone service as a permanent utility, but I think we can all agree that people can get by just fine without a telephone. In today's age, we also have now the Internet, and we have Wi-Fi, and we have cable. So there may be an instance where an applicant comes forward and says, "Well, I need to, I'm starting a business, and I'm going to need Wi-Fi service, and I prefer to have Comcast service." And Comcast, of course, is a cable-based provider. In the community overlay district, of course, it provides that that utility, if it's to be considered a permanent utility, is supposed to be buried underground as part of the service to the unit. Comcast may come forward, however, and say, "Well, we operate under a tariff that's filed with the state that says that we're permitted to provide that service through an overhead line." So now we have what's called a conundrum. We have some disagreement on the part of the applicant as opposed to what the city might be telling him. Let's just say we have a building official, and I'm not going to use Frank as an example, but perhaps in the future, a building official who's looking at this may say, "Well, we consider your Internet service to be a permanent utility, and that's got to be buried underground." The applicant comes forward and says, "Well, I disagree with you because we don't think that's a permanent utility, and not only that, but Comcast is not going to put it underground. Their tariff permits them to put that in an overhead wire." That is an example of a situation where an administrative official has made a determination that cable service, or Wi-Fi, whatever it might be, is a permanent utility. The applicant disagrees. That then comes before you, and it's the jurisdiction of this board to then determine and to interpret what does permanent utility mean. The standard that you would apply when you're dealing with that disagreement is, as stated in the ordinance, number one, there's a reasonable difference of interpretation as to the specific intent of the ordinance, or in the case of a zoning map. The resulting interpretation will not grant a special privilege to one property inconsistent with other properties or uses similarly situated. And that the decision that you might make, if in this case, to grant and accept, to grant an appeal and to override the decision of the building official, is in the best interest of the community and consistent with the spirit and interest of the zoning laws. Or you may decide that not granting the appeal is in the best interest of the community and consistent with the city zoning laws. So that's, again, a somewhat simplistic example, but that's the kind of example where an administrative review is the appropriate vehicle for this board to consider that type of action. Moving on. The ordinance provides that you have the authority to consider variances. And as you recall from your last meeting, the items that affected the property on Friendswood Link Road, all, in my opinion, and I think the board concurred, felt comfortably, fell comfortably within the variance category. And we went through, and we presented to you some forms to deal with the three specific requests that were before you for that particular property. Again, the purpose, as stated in the ordinance itself, is to grant a variance from the terms of the zoning ordinance. Your options, of course, are either to grant it, to deny it, or to grant it with conditions. And if I recall, the action taken by the board is you did grant at least one of the requested variances with conditions that they would adhere to, the drainage and requirements that pertain to that. Again, the findings that you would need to make in order to grant that variance are, as set out in the orders that you had before you last time, and I've set these out as numbers one through five. Number one, that that grant's not going to be contrary to the public interest. Number two, that special conditions are peculiar to that particular property. Number three, that a literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance is going to result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Two, that your grant of the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, as you interpreted. And then thirdly, that it's going to ensure that substantial justice will be done. That, in a nutshell, is the purpose for the variance, and that's the findings that you need to make, as you recall from your last case. Lastly, the ordinance provides your third option, and your authority is to consider and either to grant or deny what are called special exceptions. And under that umbrella of special exceptions, there are actually two types. One, of course, known as the permanent special exception, and then the temporary special exception. Aubrey, if we could go on to the next one. These, in my opinion, after going through the detailed language of the ordinance, I think in a situation where you're going to consider the grant of a special exception, be it a permanent or a temporary special exception, it's going to require this board to do a little bit more homework and a little bit more, if you will, heavy lifting in terms of whether or not to grant or deny that exception. And that's evident when you look at the ordinance itself. As concerns special exceptions, they're really limited to only three scenarios, and that are, again, pointed out to the ordinance. Number one, there is an interpretation needed of the zoning ordinance. And that is a little bit similar to what we encountered when we talked about the administrative review. But in addition to a special exception encountering an interpretation of the ordinance, there are two other types that are fairly clear and easy to understand. One of those being the de minimis exception. And the example for that actually came out in our last meeting where we talked about the...
Percentage?
Well, no, actually, well, that was one of them, which I, in my opinion, did not consider to be a de minimis exception. In the case of the property on Friendswood Link Road, one of the requests was to reduce the rear yard setback from 15 feet to 14 feet. In my opinion, that was probably something that you could comfortably, as a board, consider as a de minimis exception. And we'll get into what that specifically entails on the following slides. And then thirdly, the medical necessity. Again, if you're going to grant a special exception, those don't have an expiration date to them. So when we're talking about a permanent special exception involving an ordinance interpretation, again, the ordinance says that this is appropriate where there is a definition, or there's a term in the ordinance which is ambiguous, or contrary to common understanding. And if those facts and circumstances present themselves to the board, then you have the authority to clarify that definition or that term. Next category for a permanent special exception would be, as again, we talked about, the de minimis exception. And in my opinion, when we dealt with the rear yard setback in the last case, that was probably something that you might comfortably consider eligible for consideration as a de minimis exception because, using the words of the ordinance, it was to grant what's considered a very small exception. Again, by granting that exception, the spirit of the code was going to be met, and that thirdly, there was going to be no detriment to surrounding neighbors or to the city by granting that de minimis exception. Lastly, under the category of the special, permanent special exception, that is, is what's called the medical necessity. And that is where there's either a medical reason presented by the applicant, which is supported by that applicant's physician through a letter, or there is improvements or other conditions that need to be installed at the property in order to meet the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I'll use a very simple example in this situation. There may be a necessity to install sloped ramps or some other means by which to enable wheelchairs to get to a commercial property. But given the setbacks for the property involved, construction of that wheelchair ramp would necessarily require encroachment into a mandated setback. That would be a situation where this board could consider, on the basis of a medical necessity, the grant of a special exception, allowing that ramp to be built within that mandated setback in order to satisfy the medical necessity. And in this case, to satisfy the applicant's obligation to meet federal law, and that, in this case, would be the AD Act. Lastly, the temporary special exception. Probably an unusual situation would have to present itself where this would be considered. And if you look at the ordinance, what it says is that, number one, if you're going to grant such an exception, it really has a definite lifespan of 90 days. The purpose to grant one, as stated in the ordinance, is to allow for construction of noncompliant structures for reasons in addition to those needed for a permanent exception. And the findings that you have to make in order to grant a temporary special exception are twofold. One, the building official determines that the construction will necessarily give rise to construction, or to noncompliance with the zoning ordinance, and that there are significant reasons that the applicant cannot take immediate action to achieve compliance with the ordinance. Those are the narrow, in my view, very narrow circumstances in which you, as a board, would have the authority to consider what's called a temporary special exception to the zoning ordinance. And then lastly, on the following slide, whether you're going to grant a permanent special exception or a temporary special exception, you've got to determine that the public interest is not adversely affected. And you have to consider, among other things, and this is not the entirety of the facts that you have to consider, you have to consider, number one, is this an appropriate use of the land? What's this going to do to values for that, not just that property, but properties surrounding the applicant's property? What will this do to street congestion, traffic flow, fire access? How will the grant of the special exception affect off your off-street parking or your loading requirements? What about utility location? Is there going to be some intrusive noise or odors that will affect neighboring property owners by the grant of that special exception? Do you have objections from neighboring property owners that would bear on whether or not to grant that exception? And then, of course, for the de minimis exception, that's specifically pointed out in the ordinance, that there's an overriding benefit to the applicant that's not detrimental to your surrounding property owners. So this is probably a very short and condensed version of what options there are available to you under the zoning ordinance, but I thought, from a staff-level standpoint, as we go forward, as more applications come to you, we thought it would be important for you to understand, as these cases come forward, that these are the basic options that are available to you, and the reasons why, when we come to you, we make a recommendation that this particular application more comfortably fits within the variance category, or it may more comfortably fit into the appeal category, an appeal from an administrative decision of a city official, or perhaps it may fit more comfortably into the special exception category. And we thought this would be something that would be beneficial to you to understand the three options to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
He also said that he would have a hard copy of this presentation available for each of us.
Yes, sir.
I have one question, Mr. Polanco.
Yes, sir.
The form that we use has a request for variance, request for appeal, or request for special exception. And you referred to that as the appeal, I suppose, is what the administrative review is?
Yes, sir.
Should the form reflect that rather than appeal?
What I think we're going to do, and I had a very brief discussion with Mr. Dyer prior to the meeting, is I think what we'll do is convene again as a staff and look at that form and decide what's the best procedures and protocols going forward when we have a circumstances that might lead to review by this board. In other words, putting the applicant in the proper vehicle, if you will, coming in the front door before it ends up on your agenda, so that the form that that applicant fills out is more appropriate to the circumstances and to the facts surrounding that applicant's property. So that is something, yes, sir, that we'll be looking at as a staff. You're welcome.
If you'll recall, that form was changed a number of year ago, a number of years ago, and they put all three blanks on that form, and that's when we began to have these issues. And I think they're going to look at that and make some considerations, so. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Moving on toward tonight's Board of Adjustments duties, we're looking at the hearing for tonight. It is a request to allow a carport to encroach the front building line by nine feet at 505 Brandy Way Drive, also known as the southwest 20.5 feet of Lot 24 at northeast 44.5 feet of Lot 25 in Block 5 of Annalee, Kings Point, Section B, and White Hall, Section B, a subdivision in Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, according to the map of Platt there, recorded in Volume 1616, page 100, and transferred to plot Record 1 Map Number 15 of the map records of Galveston County, Texas. I'd like to give an explanation of how the, to the petitioner, of how tonight's proceedings will go. First, we'll have a representative from Community Development to give us a brief history of the original request and why it was denied. Then the applicant, or the petitioner, or the representative will give a history of their request, and any information they have about that. And then anyone here from the public will be offered the podium, either pro or con, regarding their information or any statement they would like to make about the request. At that time, the public comments will be closed, and the board members will take the opportunity to gather information and any, from any resource that is available to them so that they make a, they then can make a decision and ultimately make a vote on tonight's request. A point to the petitioner that a supermajority vote is required for them to be successful. That would mean that four of the five board members would have to vote in your favor for your request to be granted. The only recourse you would have at that time, if it is not granted, would be through, this is in Galveston County, would be through the Galveston County Courts. And that action, as I understand it, would have to be taken within 10 days after the decision. Also, if you're going to be speaking tonight before the board, it requires that it is done within an oath. So if you're going to speak tonight, and it doesn't look like there's too many going to be speaking tonight, but it requires that you're going to do it within an oath. So if you're going to speak tonight, I would ask you to hold up your right hand, and you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth on matters before this commission this evening. I do? Thank you very much. Okay, to get started, first we'll ask Community Development to give us a background, and I gather Frank's going to do that this evening, and his history on the original request and why it was denied.
And that street is Brandy Way.
Is it Brandy Way?
Way.
Wayne?
Way.
Wayne, not Wayne.
That way, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Well, the, how this started out, our code enforcement officer was going out on Annalea and drove up to 505. There was construction going on. Checked, and there was no permit, so they stopped the contractor and asked him about getting a permit. Permit was in the process of being completed, and there was some back and forth about the size of the, there's a front porch or cover and a rear cover, and they had it marked wrong on the plans on which one was the front and which one was the back. And trying to get that straightened out, the back one, there's no problem because it was in, it's not encroaching in anything. I'd have to have gotten you a set of the blueprints that they had to show you that. But that's, that's how it started out. And in that process, there was a lapse of time where one of the inspectors, we were doing some work on the inside, they were remodeling on the inside and getting that done. There was a patio cover on the front that had a flat roof. The individual that owns the house had had the contractor contracted him to rebuild this, not knowing about the setbacks and all. And the contractor took off the old patio cover, or the front porch, and put, built this one. And going out there, one of my inspectors realized that it was encroaching and approached the contractor that was there and telling him that what he thought it needed to be done and where the posts needed to be set. And we had been going back and forth with them for about, well, since last May, and about trying to see about, about this. This was constructed, and the owner finally found out about what was going on and about, and I hadn't, didn't receive a survey till around the first of October to actually find where the, and you should have a copy of the survey that I denied because they showed the encroachment. And the best, you know, in seeing what was there, we measured out it's encroaching nine feet into the setback, the front setback. And at that point, talking with him, told him there's, you know, only have, I can't approve that. The only option you have is to go to ZBOA and see if they can approve it. And so here we are.
Thank you. If the petitioner, if you'd like to step up to the podium and introduce yourself and explain your request for your petition?
Hi. I'm Christine Grubbs.
If you'd just introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Christine Grubbs. I'm the owner of the house.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know too much about this. Basically, I contracted this contractor. I told him what I wanted, and he said he would have to see about getting a permit. He told me he got the permit. I paid him for everything, and he builds this. I go out of the country. When I come back, I find out it's a problem. And I met with Frank at the house, and he told me we would need to get a survey, so I did that. Talked to the contractor, and he says that he was under the understanding that he was allowed to replace the posts where the original posts of the original carport were. And I don't know if it was a misunderstanding, or if he is being misleading, but that's what he did. He just replaced the posts where the posts of the original carport were. And so here we are. Apparently that, he was not supposed to do that. And I found out also that he never did come pick up the plans as the city had approved or what they were saying was approved, so.
Thank you.
I don't know that I can add any more to it.
I'm sure we may have some more questions for you in a few minutes.
Okay. Do I go sit down?
Yeah, you may want to sit a little bit closer. We may have a question or two later. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak either pro or con? If you'd step to the podium, please, sir, and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name's Kerry Haskell. Kerry Haskell, H-A-S-K-E-L-L. And I live across the street, 506 Brandy Way. And I knew John Robinson, who owned the house, prior to the previous owner, and prior to you, of course. And there was a problem way back when, when he built it, it extended out even further than what is there. Then there was an agreement with the city back, I believe it was in 1989, where they came to an agreement where they cut it back to the posts that were standing before they did this one. And this is, I'm perfectly good with this. I'm very excited about the upgrades in the neighborhood. I'm excited about the improvements. My neighbor to the, on my other side of me, they had a big improvement in that house, and I really think this is an improvement to the neighborhood. I don't really understand what the problem is if it was an extending, it was already there, and it had been approved by a previous board back in 1989. I don't know. I just would hope that we could, you know, get through this and somehow keep an, you know, make an agreement that this is just fine and dandy, and we can go on with it. We'd like to see it finished. We'd like to see neighbors in there, and we believe it's an improvement to our neighborhood. And I would hope that you would allow it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak either pro or con about the request? Anybody else? Is there, for the third time, anybody else? Then the public portion of tonight's request for variance has closed, and the board will now take the opportunity to open discussion regarding the request for 505, and it's Brandy Wayne, is that?
Wayne.
Wayne, thank you. Brandy Wayne. 505 Brandy Wayne in Friendswood, Texas. So anyone that would like to ask questions regarding that variance, please take the opportunity now.
Okay. Ms., would you take the podium again? And some of my questions may be answered by staff.
Not big on mics. Question, is this, are you planning to live in this house?
Yes.
Okay. For staff, is the house itself meet the 25-foot setback?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any question about coverage of the law? Is there any question about coverage of the lot, 35%?
No, sir.
How long is the actual carport? It looks like it's not nine feet, but about 12 feet. It looks like the posts are about at least three feet back from the overhang.
I think it's 15 foot in length, but it's, it's just encroaching that nine feet from where that blue line, you can see the blue line that's on there?
Okay.
Where that, that's where the front building line is, and it's encroaching that, in that front by about nine feet. It's, I think, unless we had a survey or get it right on the money, it's, could be nine foot, one inch, but it's right at nine feet.
Okay, so it's nine feet.
In front of the building line, so towards the street.
Okay. The next question is back for you, do you need the carport?
Well, I don't know, does anybody need a carport? I don't know, I, my idea was I'd like to park there since the garage had already been converted. I kept it like that because I need the extra bedroom. And when you pull up, you know, it's nice if it's raining to not get everything wet. I have three children, and so I wanted a better carport than what was there.
And it certainly looks better than what, what was there. I'm trying to find out if there's, in the earlier presentation, there was a question or an option about disability.
No, there's none of that.
Those are the questions I have.
I have a question, Frank. The, I have the, a picture of the old carport there, and it was a flat roof. As best I can tell, it looks like a stick and board, flat roof. And you're telling me that the, the posts that are in there now are, I noticed when I went out and had a look at it, the posts have not been set in concrete. But the, the posts that are in the old flat roof are in exactly the same position as the, the posts that are there now?
It was my understanding that the, that the posts were farther out on the corner, and he moved them back in to where it cantilevered out past that.
Yeah. But, okay, see that picture there with the flat roof?
Yes, sir.
Are the posts that are currently set, but they're not set in concrete yet, but they're there?
Right. And that was, after constructing it and getting it all up, that's when it came to the point and wanted us to go out and inspect it, and then realizing that he had already built it before we had had anything done, had looked at it. He was wanting us to look at it, see if he could pour the concrete.
Got it. Okay, the, and, and those posts are nine feet over?
Right, in front of the building line.
Yes, and there was never a permit to, to build the, the new carport?
There was a permit submitted, there was question about it. We didn't have a survey, we had asked about getting a survey with the contractor that originally started this, and we were never able to do that. And we were, at that time, we were only dealing with the contractor that she had hired, and it wasn't until sometime after, I guess, I think it was in August, is when I was contacted by Bonnie, and she was kind of taking over for her to help get this done. And then that's when the communication started because there was also an issue about the electrical. We got that resolved, and from that point on, we, you know, conversing back and forth to where we got to this point, trying to understand how we got to this point, and...
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, excuse me, just a minute. I'm still confused, was there a permit to build that thing or not?
There was a permit, there were supposed to be some corrections down there, it was never, the permit was permitted based on what, but he never picked up the permit, came to get the permit. We were going to issue the permit if he could give us the rest of the information that we needed, but he never supplied that to us. That's why the permit was sitting up here, and it wasn't until just...
So there was never a permit on the job site?
Well, we had done the permit for the inside, for the work that was being done on the inside. The outside work, they had applied for it, the only one that had an issue was the one on the front, the, to construct the...
Okay, can you tell me a little bit more about how this other old flat roof, the city had approved that?
I am not aware of that, I, there may have been, you know, I mean, I...
They had to shorten it. The Robinsons lived there, they had to shorten it, that's what the board required.
Okay, and I wouldn't have aware of that.
They had contractors that did not get the permits.
Okay.
And they shortened, they made them go back, and they had to shorten it to keep the carport.
It must have been when you were here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I remember.
Oh, you, they started the carport?
They already, yeah.
Without a permit?
Yeah, they, he built the carport.
Without permit?
Right.
And then?
And then, we found out, the city found out that this had been done, so they had to come before ZBOA.
Yes.
And ZBOA denied because they came too far into the...
Setback.
Setback, yeah. So they made them, they gave them a period of time, but they had to shorten it to take it back. And that's why I'm looking, because, and these old posts were the same holes?
That's why I...
That's what I'm wondering.
That's my understanding, I, I don't know that for a fact.
Because it came too far out in the, in the setback.
That's why you denied it originally?
Yeah, that's why it was denied. No, I was secretary on the board, I wasn't...
I see.
But that's why it was denied, because there was no permit at all ever issued. So they made, they gave them time, but they gave, it was not a happy time.
I understand.
But they made them tear that front part off and redo the front and take it back towards the house.
With the same problem.
So this is what...
It's a beautiful asset to the addition, however, I noticed there's not one other house out there.
Well, there was an ordinance in that subdivision, no carports. I don't know if that's still, I mean, a deep restriction. I don't know if that's still...
Of course, the city doesn't have any responsibility with deep restrictions.
No, not at all.
But I did, I have to make comment that there is not one other house on that street that I saw that has carports added on like that.
Original builds?
The originally built, originally built within the ordinance.
Have circular drives?
Yeah, that have circular drives that are originally built within the ordinance, that were built with, yes, built.
This man-made.
But added on, no. Are there any other questions on the board? Please.
I actually do have a question relating to something you had mentioned concerning the homeowners association. There is a homeowners association in Analia, is that correct? Have they made any indication to you from that association how they're, how they feel about?
That's in Waimalu, though, they have their own HOA.
Okay, I guess...
They approved it.
Same question.
The homeowners association approved it, we sent them the drawings from the engineer.
Okay, so they don't have any particular concerns from their standpoint that there aren't any other carports similar to that in other houses on the street?
Correct.
Thank you.
Frank, I have a question, if, what, if this is, if the variance is not granted, what, what are the circumstances? How much would this require to be, how much would this have to be shortened?
Whatever the engineer would allow them to use when the post is brought back.
From the face of the garage, then what would that leave?
Um, just to guess on my part, it would probably have to be cut off about nine feet with that encroachment, because they, that cantilever out, they only let them cantilever four to five feet, and that would be about the limit, so they'd almost have to cut it back nine feet to do that.
Are there, does the board have any other questions? Is there a motion to, for a variance?
You want to, in the positive?
Traditionally, that's how we've done it. Is there a motion to accept the variance regarding the setback at 505 Brandywine Drive at Princewood, Texas, to grant the variance?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance.
Oh, and, excuse me for just a minute, Arnold?
Yes, sir.
And, and how, I, I'll have to ask again, how would you like in that motion? Don't we?
Sure. There's, there's two options for how to procedurally handle this. Number one, you can ask for a vote, yes or no, on each of the five separate findings that you would need to find affirmatively in order to grant the variance. In other words, there's got to be a yes to all five of these to grant this variance. So you could either take a separate vote on each of the separate five findings, or you could take a general vote on just simply granting the variance and assuming that there are four votes that concur to grant that, then we would need to poll those four members and have them confirm that they agree affirmatively that all of these findings have been satisfied.
Okay, so that would need to be in the motion?
Yes.
So your motion would need, be in the positive and that, and that all, all members would be in concurrence with the standards for the variance? Are you comfortable with that? So the variance would be, how can we state that? To allow, to allow for the carport to encroach the nine feet, and that the, it meets all required standards?
You've got a question?
Yes, sir.
Originally, I think you said you had the option of making a broad statement to grant?
You need your mic on, sir. That is correct.
A broad statement to, to make a motion to grant the variance.
That is correct.
Period.
And...
And then afterward, if it is...
Supported by four, if it's supported by four members, if that motion is supported by four of the board members, then we would need confirmation from each of the four that voted to grant the variance, that they agree that all five findings have been satisfied. That is the second option.
Okay. Then I'd like to make the motion that the variance be granted.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Is there any further discussion on the variance? Then we'll have a vote. All those in favor of the variance, raise your right hand. All those opposed? The variance is not granted. Now, my next question is, since the variance is not granted, I do not believe that there is a standard for either the appeal or a special exception. However, if a board member chooses to make a motion for either of those two, it is their choice. Is there a motion for a special exception? Since there is no motion for that, is there a motion for an appeal? Hearing neither, then neither is granted. So I, I'm afraid your request has been denied. So Frank, at this point, do we need to make any further comment in regards to, do you need to make comment to the petitioner in her circumstance?
I can get with her, I think, I don't know if, Arnold, if this, I know it's not going to be something that's done overnight that can be done, so we need to get with her to try to find out how this is going to be accomplished in a, in a, you know, time period.
Okay, next on our agenda. Consideration of possible action regarding approval of minutes for the October 27th meeting. The only thing that I saw on there, I think that it was dated for, I mean, for 2014, was it? Did I see that?
That's correct.
I think, instead of 2015, it was dated 2014. Then the chair would accept a motion to accept a minutes for the October 27, 2015 meeting?
I'd still move they be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those that are in favor of accepting the minutes? Any opposed? Then the meeting is accepted. Comments from board members? I have a comment. And I mean, and, and I'm glad you're here, Mr. Hill, and, and I'm glad Mr. Polanco is here, and this is just kind of out of nowhere. Several years ago, or two or three years ago, I brought this up, and, and, and I'm glad you're here. I brought this up at a board meeting in an annual report about rotating members through the, through the board. The, the, I'm sorry, the, the...
Alternates.
Alternates, thank you, geez, I just had a brain lock, just locked. The alternates, and be, because they so rarely have the opportunity to serve, and they're so loyal, they always show up, and to me, I'm so grateful. And I, and I'd be more than willing to step down for a year and give them the opportunity to rotate as regular board members. And I wondered, and I mentioned that once before in a annual report, and I wondered if, if that opportunity is available, is that a charter issue?
It is not a charter issue. What we would need to do is look carefully at the language of the ordinance that controls the composition of the board and how it distinguishes between regular members and alternate members to make sure that there might not need to be any tweaking of the language. I don't know that without looking carefully at it, whether or not there would need to be some council action to massage or adjust that language to enable your proposal to go forward, but we'll take a look at that.
How do other board members feel about that? Would you be willing to give alternate members an opportunity to sit in your seat for, and consider yourselves alternates so that they could rotate up here? I mean, they're always loyal, they always show up, and I'd be more than willing to take a turn.
It depends on what the charter says.
Yes, yes, absolutely, within the ordinances. And, and if that's possible, I'd like to bring that up again, if, if we could do that.
I talked to the city secretary about that. I did, I remember talking to the city secretary about that, and I'm not sure it's possible, but Arnold could check into it.
Again, and it may, it may require that there be some adjustment to the language of the ordinance as it's currently written, but, you know, certainly if that's something that the board, if the consensus of the board is that would be something to bring to council, then we would look at the drafting, the appropriate language to enable that process to take place.
While I agree with you, Ron, you as a vice chairman and Greg as chairman, how could you step aside?
Well, perhaps not this term, but I, it's something that I would like to, if, if they're willing to... they're willing to invest some time, I'd, I'd certainly like to take the opportunity to do a little bit of research, if it's possible. Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who would like to make comment on anything?
I move adjourned.
Well, well, there's one other thing. For councillor Borley, the Arizona report, was there anything from the city council?
I'd just like to make one comment, since we were talking about Analia Whitehall, you know, we had a tornado go through there a couple of weeks ago and did quite a bit of damage, it was.
Yes.
It was bad.
As when I went to look at this house, I was shocked.
Well, I'm happy to report that the city has pretty well cleaned up almost all the debris and I, I think they did a great job at it. And anyway, it's devastating for those, there's a lot of those houses in bad shape and I did hear that Texas Windstorm is, is treating the homeowners fairly, which I hope would be the case. And anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there motion to adjourn? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, I believe we're adjourned.